I'm not sure if you wanted feedback from us, Dory. I think that the agreements look fine as they are. As a ASRAC liaison, I think I'm always also thinking of like, okay, how are we being cognizant and making sure that we're keeping in mind the rest of the commission also and bringing them in? And what ways can we involve them in this? So I think that's just a little something I would sprinkle in there as we're in these meetings, you know, I'm thinking about the meeting that we're going to have next week also, and what are some updates and ways that we could bring them into this?
Thanks for that, Paulo. So these agreements, folks, are for us in this container because we know that some pieces of identity are going to come up, right? And I'm going to say, I work in a world where I practice talking about my identity all the time. And not everybody here does that, right? So, you know, I oftentimes will introduce myself and say, so that people don't have to guess at it and they don't have to put the mind space to it. My name is Dory King. I'm a cisgender heterosexual black woman who's middle aged, right? Or 56 years old. Usually I use 56 because I don't consider it my middle years. I hope I get longer than this. And then 106, 112, maybe. So I oftentimes will introduce myself that way. I know that is not the comfort level of everybody in a space. So I do that because it just lets people know. Anything you had a question about, you can remove that question from your mind because you know who I am from my introduction. So these agreements are actually a framework for us to work in. For me, the one that I like to focus on for myself is intent versus impact. And intent versus impact is really important to me because oftentimes I have the best intentions in the world. And then I may say something because I am a human that brings up all my biases, all the stuff that I've learned that I probably need to unlearn from my 56 years on earth. There's some things that I need to unlearn, some things I want to keep. And I have to not focus on my intent, but focus on what the other person's impact is, right? And I think this is especially important, Neil, based on the conversations that HREC and the Beaverton Police Department have had, right? So it's saying, let's have an open dialogue and conversation where we can bring up those things of huh? Your intent may have been this, but this is the way you impacted me, right? So I'm going to say, can we all agree to use these agreements in this space as we work together on this project? You can just give me a head nod if you're willing and able. All right. Thanks, y'all. So perfect. So to dig into what the project is and Brittany, I'm going to ask Paulo to help me because I'm going off of my notes from our last meeting. Great conversation with HREC. So the view of this project is an art project. And I think, Brittany, this is the part that really excited you. It's an art project that's also going to be a way to collect qualitative data. Right? So it's a way of engaging with the community to answer some questions that HREC has post our engagement last year with the police department and the learning that we did around policing and community safety. And to see if we can pull BPD officers into that as well, Captain Lieutenant. So the goal would be to create some kind of portable art project. And this is the part, if you're a visual person like me, you may not be able to picture it yet. I can't picture it yet. And but something that is portable, that can go from place to place and be popped up, set up really quickly. That would have cards that would be part of the art project. So for this art project, because it is an inquiry based art project, some of the things we'll need, we'll need some questions for what we want to know from the community. So here are some questions that I kind of wrote up. Why do you want to ask the community questions? That's our first question, right? So I'm going to pop that into the chat. And that's probably the first thing that we want to talk about. So what is the point of HREC and the Beaverton Police Department, folks, asking questions of the public? So any ideas on that? So if you all want to unmute and brainstorm, I know one of the things that came up is we want to know how the public feels about community safety, not just policing, but how the public feels about community safety. And when I say public, I'm going to be really specific, the people that reside here in Beaverton.
Well, Dory, I appreciate that. For me, it's kind of simple. It's all about relationships. As I mentioned earlier, 34 years, it goes back to it doesn't matter what community you're in, whether it's a town of 5,000 or Beaverton's population are bigger. It's all about relationships with the community. There's sometimes nationally, we can't control all that, obviously, but it's critical on the relationships in the community. You know, I mean, I may not be able to affect what's going on in the sister cities around the city of Beaverton, but I can definitely make an impact on what's occurring in Beaverton.
I love that. So you're saying, Captain, the relationships that you can control and have the relationships that you can engage in as an officer in a community. Love it. So that's a great why. Why do we want to ask community questions? Because we want to engage with the community and hear what they're thinking.
I think also it's helpful to understand who lives here and like why they're here. I think that those are big pieces of this because a lot of people choose to live in this area and a lot of people have always lived in this area. So understanding that duality, I think, will be really important, too.
Great. That's a really good point, Brittany, especially as the demographics have changed quite a bit in the community. And I think, are we at 100,000 now? Have we hit the magic number?
Remember, maybe slightly under or over. I heard it the other night, but I forgot.
Yeah, I think we're close. I think we're pretty close. Neil, did you have anything you wanted to add? Or Paula, did you have anything you wanted to add? The why?
I would say I agree with the captain. I mean, feedback's feedback and whatever avenue you get it. And understand that, too. We do do community surveys, things like that. We solicit information. This is, to me, this is a what you're describing is another mechanism. So let's listen at information from different folks, a different way. So that's, that's what I'm hearing.
Actually, I was thinking the same thing, too. I know that there are opportunities that people can access and give feedback to police via the internet, but not everyone has been actually using that. And this is a really visible way. So this doesn't really hit the why, but more so, I guess I'm focusing on the how. And it's a really visible and, you know, with the summer coming around the corner, way that people could get engaged. And in bold, one of the questions that Bold participant asked was, hey, so you got this new public safety center? Is there space for the community to, you know, take up space and get to know you all? What does that even look like? And I didn't have an answer for them, but this could be one of those opportunities. I'm sorry, Bold Beaverton Organizing Leadership Development. It's a leadership development program that's going on right now.
Great point, right? That there's also a new space. So with that, I'm going to move us to our second question. And this is an important one. So from a research standpoint, whenever you collect data, whether it's qualitative or quantitative, there is a responsibility, as I put it, that researchers have to provide that material and information back to the community to do what I call the sanity check on that information. So does that information make sense? And what questions do you have about it? Also, just as a researcher, when you have data, you want to make sure that you include the folks that you received the data from in debriefing it. So this is a question that's important. How will we use the responses we get from the community? Right? So oftentimes what happens, and I'm going to describe what happens a lot in community engagement work, that is unfortunate. And it's unfortunate that it happens because what it does is it really mars the relationship between community and entities that are collecting information, right? So oftentimes what happens, survey comes out, people fill out the survey, it goes somewhere. And then the folks that filled out the survey never hear back about where those results went. They're curious and they might bring it up like, oh, what happened to that, to that information? If it's not shared back with them, then they're not really included in that process. So it's not really a community based inclusive engagement. Right? So we want to think about how we use the responses that we get. So for Brittany and I, this means coming up with some ideas that we might take back to HREC and say, hey, maybe from the responses that we get from the data, the qualitative data that we get, we might hold one or two community forums in the winter and fall. And this is just an idea that's coming off the top of my head, Brittany, so it's not that out, but we may hold one or two community forums in the fall to go over the data, say where we collected the data and also invite the participants who fill that data in for us to come be part of those discussions. So that's an example. So the question might be for Captain and Lieutenant, how would you all see yourselves using that data? So once we've done the project and we're all finished, I know I'm looking way down the road. How would you consider or how might you use that internally?
When you say internally, is that just within the city or within the department, Dory?
I'm going to say internal within the department and then external, both inwardly facing towards the officers and the staff within the department and then outwardly facing with the community of folks of Beaverton.
I guess kind of two fronts on there, but maybe, maybe only one. Let me get me train of thought here. I'll apologize if I look a little tired. I'm working from home and recovering from breaking my leg in surgery. So Neil's in the office, but I'm I'm recouping, but getting on the mend here. I think internally, the department always appreciates feedback, you know? In this day and age, it's easier with social media, but you know, back when I first started, it was, it was a letter or note that was sent in. So feedback's always good. I mean, constructive feedback, right? Whether it's negative or positive. That's, that's the key word, constructive feedback. And then for the, it allows us to have an internal conversation, just like the city has us do an internal employee survey every year, you know, which allows us to have a conversation. And then especially if it's, if it's, it allows us to have a conversation in the community because many times, you know, law enforcement's on the front line of seeing what's trending in the community, good or bad. And so and the needs of the community, you know, and so for to be able to get some feedback, have good quality conversations is critical.
I love that. So using the information to generate conversation internally about trends that you might be seeing.
Correct. And externally, when we have conversations with the, with the community, you know, this is kind of what we're seeing, what are we, what are you seeing? What do we need to fix? You know, what communities, what community groups need assistance? You know, how can we work together with social group partners? You know, it's all this collective, especially, you know, I could go on and on, especially like in mental health and homelessness. It's, it's not just us. It has to be a collective effort on a variety of groups and individual.
Thanks, Captain.
So I'll just take a broader view to that. That's right. I guess it really depends on what the, what the data says, what's the content. It's kind of an unknown. So it's real hard to give a you know, a resolute answer. I mean, it's a kind of, we'll see. Because as you know, too, just like many things, there might be some really good suggestions, but there might be reasons why we can or can't do that. So until, until I know what the substance of the content is, it's real hard to give, you know, a great answer, but but that's the nature of, you know, the world we live in, you know, we learn things and, you know, what do you, what do they say? You don't know what you don't know. So that's it.
Neil, I appreciate that broader view. And I'm going to say, my experience with data, especially this kind of qualitative data that we'll receive. And I'm going to use my setting. So Captain, I worked in schools for 20 years. So schools are these complex organisms just like police departments in cities, right? So sometimes some of the data that we would get, we would hold internally, right? Because one, it might lead to identifying particular families or students based on identifiers. So we didn't want to put that out to the entire community, right? Because it, it would basically make us not holding people's confidentiality, right? Would be a violation of confidentiality. So we would hold that data internally, but we would also discuss it. So I'm going to give an example that's not a true example. I just have to prefix it by saying but an example that I've seen with other schools. So let's say a school had a small population of Latinx students. And there was data that showed up that Latinx students were having more challenges with teachers who were in the English department, right? Internally, as an administrator, I would look at some things, right? Like, oh, these students are saying they're having challenges with folks in the English department, lower grades, not getting into AP classes. So I would go and pull quantitative data, like how many Latinx students are actually in AP classes? What are the grades for all my Latinx students versus all the other racial identifiers, right? So that I could see, is there a difference for these students with their English classes? Then I would also go as far as to look at comments on report cards and use software to pull the comments so that I could see like, oh, you know what? I'm seeing a challenge here that might reveal some unconscious bias on the part of teachers. They are constantly telling our Latinx students that they aren't speaking up enough in class, right? That's the criticism that I'm seeing repeatedly in all their comments. But I'm only seeing, or maybe the majority of the time I'm seeing that for Latinx students, but not for somebody else. So that would be the internal piece that I would do outwardly facing. I may not have that discussion. I might say, the data is showing that, that our teachers are working through some biases that they might have in grading. And that's what I might say out publicly, right? So that's just to kind of illustrate that difference, Neil and Captain, of what the differences might be. So that's one example that comes to mind for me in the field that I work in. So I think it's good that we're saying that you know, Brittany, if we can think about that idea of a forum for us, that's a concrete one. I understand officers, if you're not quite there, but I think there's a place where you're, there is some commitment on an internal conversation around the data. And I think that's an important piece. And perhaps as we're thinking about HREC's role, we can bridge that piece of what would those conversations look like if we included officers in those conversations, right?
Definitely. Just one, the quick on data, too, is, you know, it's, it's you can't, correct me if I'm wrong, Dory, but you can't just take, do like a survey and get data and then assume that everything's set in stone, that that's correct, right? I think like you had said, because we even have internal surveys, like I mentioned earlier, every year. But the city of Beaverton, break it down, departments is different. So like the police department and operations, you know, the street crews and all that. Some were operational, so we have almost a little different mindset. So when you go to interpret the same questions that, let's say, engineering does, we're all approaching them a little differently. So we take the data and we still have to look at it and say, okay, well, why was it answered this way? And what does it mean? And we understand there's nuances between like different city departments and all that. And from there, I think that's where surveys take value for me as well, is like the surveys, the platform. But then we could do the conversation after that, like, okay, why did we get to this point? It's not necessarily a negative, but this is why we answered it, or probably the majority answered it this way.
I'm right there with you because for me, the best part of data, whether it be qualitative or quantitative, is the questions that it generates for us as people who are looking at the data, right? It's in that analysis. And what correlations are we seeing? Or what things, what questions are coming up, right? You may end up with a question that says, hey, wow, you know what? There's this, you know, if we say that one of the demographics that we want to measure is what neighborhoods people are in. And, and we see that, you know, people in a particular neighborhood have a particular perspective. It may mean like, oh, maybe there's not enough presence of police officers in that neighborhood where people don't see them all that frequently. And maybe that means that police officers need to engage more, or we need to ask that question, right? Like, you know, asking that question of, let's say it's central Beaverton, right? Maybe in central Beaverton, people don't see officers as much. So it's a question of, are there officers? And do we need, you know, do we need more patrols or do we need less patrols, right? So I think those are all questions that can come up. And I think you're exactly right. Data in itself is just that. It's a pile of information. It's how we interpret it and actually what questions it generates that are, I think, of the most value. Brittany, you're, you're recently having done all of the work that you've done in school. What's your perspective?
Yeah, something that I have tried to keep in all of my research is a place for human error. Because a lot of my research has been quantitative, and then I've had to follow that up with quantitative, like proof. And everything that I've added, I was also thinking, in addition to a community forum, I think documentation will be really important. So people can physically like see what we're talking about. And in that, I would definitely include like where our errors were, what we would do better or differently next time to gain more insight. Having all of that, because I think, I think we're going to get a lot of information from this. But I also think that this could be a catalyst for future projects and sort of giving us a bigger picture of what we could do better and how we could engage more people. But yeah, I do really like the idea of a community forum because I think we're going to get a lot of questions and a lot of feedback that having a forum maybe in partnership with BPD, hosting somewhere that way, we could engage more of the community in those conversations and sort of see what other ideas generate from that will be really important. But yeah, I think, I think always adding sort of what our errors were or what our flaws were or what lens we're looking through because we all have a different background. We're all coming from a different place. So having the people who are engaging with this art piece understands that at the end, like we are human, we make errors, this was our intention, will be really important for the public, too.
Thank you for that. So powerful because that's the piece, right? We're, we're humans doing research on opinion and affect, right? So how, what your impressions are around your safety in the community, what community safety is. And this leads so well, folks, into in our, in our next few minutes, really kind of drafting a few questions to take back, right? So for Captain Lieutenant, you all would be sharing these with, I assume, Chief. And Brittany, I think we would be sharing with our team on HREC and some questions that we would have that we want to find out about, right? Within the community. And so an example of a question in design thinking, one of the ways that you, you start a question is how might we or how might you? So HMW, how might we? And so an example, how might we create the safest community possible for everyone? That would be a design thinking question that we could ask people. And I tend towards those questions because they are broad and wide open. And that could be one of our general questions, right? So then what we're picturing, folks, is kind of a card on one side where people will be able to respond to the questions. And then on the back, demographics that we would, would collect from people. So it would involve checking off, right? So simple check offs, let's, for example, I think one that's really important when we talk about policing is thinking about racial identity. Because we know that folks of some racial identities are more impacted by policing than other folks, right? So to be specific, that black men generally have more encounters with the police. As do Latinx men have more encounters with the police than other racial groups, racial and gender groups, right? So we may want to do race, gender. So those are things for us to think about as well. And Paula just put a great question in, how might we create the safest community for everyone? Right? So that could be one of our questions. And I would say two to three questions is probably good. So how might we create the safest community for everyone? Might be one. Anything that's like a burning topic that you want to, very funny, Paula, I didn't even realize you were just talking to me as I was saying it. Thank you. Captain or Lieutenant, anything that you want to know, what's a burning question that you have for the community around community safety?
Well, a quick question. I mean, I kind of have questions, but then again, they're just at this point, just Paul's questions, too. So I know the chief would maybe want to. So I don't know if these are final, Dory, or just kind of the conversation pieces.
These are drafts, right? So what we can do is we would take back our draft questions and then have people work on them. And I'm thinking, I'm going to put a kind of container around it. Three questions seems about right. Because when you think about, when I think about an object story here, I think about an art piece that has three sides. So I think that triangulation, it would be a triangle and we'd be able to get people maybe to do one question each, depending on their time and where we pop up. Or maybe to do two of the three, but you know, only if somebody has seriously has a lot of time and we're doing something like night market, is it going to be public, Paulo? Or is it going to, is it going to be in person or is it going to be online?
It'd be in person. And I'm sorry, I don't know. I was kicked off for a little bit. I have unstable internet. And so I'm, I don't know if that affects anyone else. Night market's going to be interesting.
Okay, well, I have, so I have some questions, not content of the questions that, that, that would be posed to the public or to the police. But I'm more curious of how, how you envision this, this project working, kind of logistics of it. You know, the, the, the who, the where, the what, that kind of stuff. And also whether or not this dovetails into anything, you know, we have an arts commission within the city, too. And, and do we liaison with, with the arts commission if we're, if we're going to label this an art project? So, so I guess I have some questions about, about that kind of stuff.
Excellent questions on the logistics. And I'm going to keep us on the questions, right? So I'm going to say, let's, let's be generative. And yes, I know all about the logistics piece because I've also offered some of those questions to Paulo already. And, and I think those are like our next, that will be our next meeting to figure out some of those logistics pieces. But having the questions will be really important because it will impact the art piece.
Okay, no, that, that makes sense. We still have the logistics to framework on this, right? Okay.
So in a generative way, Captain, what are you thinking? What questions are coming up for you?
Well, I just think one, you know, it goes back to me for the conversation, you know, how do we, how do we continue to have collaborative conversations for the greater good of the city, the community of Beaverton? And then, and that's a pretty broad conversation, but I won't keep referencing 34 years, but I guess you do that when you get close to the end of your current profession, but I can't even count how many times, whether just on a individual call for service or something else, or a group, you just don't know. I'm willing to have a conversation, but someone's not. And so there's not much you can do. And, and, and I've always told new officers, as many times, if you spend an extra 10 minutes on a call for service, it doesn't sound like a lot of time, but 10 minutes makes a world of difference to someone's life when they're in a traumatic situation. So to me, I just want to have collaborative conversation because if it's not collaborative and constructive, it's just, we're not going to make progress. And it's, we all care about the city of Beaverton and who lives here. And that's important to me. And I'm sure it's important for Neil, too.
So I'm going to, if I can wordsmith this a little bit, and it's going to be a quick wordsmith, how might we cultivate collaborative conversations?
Yes, that's the excellent Reader's Digest version of my long answer.
And I think that's a great question, Captain, because that gets beyond even policing, right? Because it gets to how do we as a city, as a group of folks who reside in the city?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. Finish, please.
I'll just use a real quick example because I still remember to today, I don't know how many years ago it was, let's say 10. I was at a community meeting and it was mainly geared for, you know, the Spanish speaking population who didn't speak English, which was good. Myself and Consuela Star from the Service Division were there. And we were waiting our turn to speak and there's, I don't remember what group it was, but there's a couple of nice individuals from a social services group. But they're giving out bad information on like traffic stops to, and putting a little fear into people. And I finally raised my hand and asked the host, can I, can I please speak? Because we need to work collaborative on that because a lot of the individuals in the room just want us to know, like, if somebody hit and run their car, how do they get assistance? And traffic stops, we, you know, the immigration warrants and all that. And it was just like, as a community, to take care of everyone, we have to work collaboratively together because the information that was given out was so wrong, it's creating fear. And it's like, this is not work. This is not correct. And we have to work together.
And Captain, I think there's a lot of that going on right now, right? Like I'm seeing it with conversations that I have had recently with people around SROs have been really interesting to me because it's like, oh, if we don't have SROs, there'll be no police available for schools. And I was like, hold on, there's still police officers. And SROs are police officers and some And SROs are police officers and some of them are sheriff's deputies. What you all wanna think about is what makes sense? What are the jobs? Because people don't honestly know what an SRO does. Right? So I think what you're saying is that, that misinformation that's out there and that opportunity to correct it. I think that's another piece.
Yeah, so I, I would also, um, and I don't know how you wanna frame this question, but um kind of dispel like perceived. Uh, police practices or I don't wanna say conduct, but um. I guess the example I would use is, and I've heard this from the ATRAC, that our sole purpose is to find people doing things wrong. Arrest them and throw them in jail or uh, you know. You know, use like states, we're like a state sponsored uh organization to, to go do these things. That's patently false. Um, so how, how do we, how do we surround a conversation around that, uh, around our, our purpose and for what we do? But also at the same time, addressing the real needs of the community, because there are real things out there that, that uh, you know, we can do better, that, that everybody can do better. So kind of uh, may, maybe how to separate some of the noise with the reality and, and how do you frame a question like that?
You know, and, and Neil, in that, Brittany, help me craft this question. Um. How? I think it becomes a how do, I'm getting away from the how might we, the action steps, but how do you? What, how do you see the role of police officers? In community safety? I think that to me is kind of the bigger question. Um, because I think that's where you're going, Neil, like that's the big question. Like, how do you see police officers' role in community safety? Um, might be one of those third questions. I, I like the one about how might we cultivate collaborative conversations in our community? Um, but this one is really a how do you see, right? Because this way you're getting. How, you're getting feedback on how community members see the police, right? Um, and Neil, you know, that, that piece for me is important too, because that's affect. Once again, right? Like effectively, how do I view policing in Beaverton?
Well, yeah, I, I agree, Dory. I think it's a how and a why, because sometimes uh. If, if you don't have a real lived experience and, and people do have real lived experiences, but there's others that don't. So how or why or, you know, where, where, where did you, where did you learn this? Um, how did you learn this? And, and what, what, what is, what, what's out there that we can, we can clarify or add context or, or, or content to, to whatever that is? Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a really look, kind of a loaded question and it's a big one. But uh, part of that's about, and that, that's how you kind of, I think if you get past the most barriers too, you, you'll have a little bit more trust in conversation. Um, but it's just a thought and I know we're, we're in the early stages here.
I love that, Brittany's, Brit- Brittany, wonderful, wonderful, wonderful way to phrase it. How did, how do you see the role of police officers in the community safety? Where did you learn about community safety? I think we need to craft that part about where did you learn about or, you know, where, how did those impressions or. The role that you see police officers playing, how did that develop for you, right?
And all that, yeah. And I'll add to that. It, it's not all negative stuff because there's positive things too. Right? Because ultimately, you're, you're gonna hear some great things and you're gonna hear not so great things. And again, um. How, how, how does one hear this and, and the other not? And, and ki- kind of get, get, get into where people are coming from, uh, from all different backgrounds.
Well, and here's the data that we know, you know, from this year of research. I was shocked to learn that only twenty percent of US citizens have any contact with police officers, right? And I was shocked because my perspective is that of a black woman. So my husband and children have been stopped multiple times by police officers, right? And that's just, that's my normative experience with that. So I have a very different experience than the rest of America. If they're only getting stopped about twenty percent of the time.
Well, Dory, there's an old saying and it's not scientific and it has nothing to do with uh, 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 people's backgrounds or anything. But I think it was, and Captain, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's ten percent of people take a hundred percent of our time or something like that. Uh, which kind of goes along, you're, you're twenty percent there, which is a little more, but yeah, ultimately, a lot of people uh. Never, never have any interaction with the police, no, no citations, uh, good, bad, indifferent, uh, but that is interesting. I, I, that data right there, I hadn't heard that, but thank you.
Yeah, and, and Neil, what I'm gonna say, I'm gonna make a connection. So the work that I do with equity and inclusion, oftentimes, this is the question that we're asking people, right? When we're asking them to contemplate their relationship to race in America and racism. It's, you know, what was your first experience where you noticed race as a child, right? And there's a whole bunch of research that shows a whole lot of different experiences. For people of color, that experience usually happens age seven and earlier. For white folks, that usually happens closer to middle school and up, right? And that just happens because we have, we live in a world where um white culture is so dominant. That folks don't have those racialized encounters if they happen to be white until they're much older. And it usually involves encounters with people of color. Where people of color also tend to have more negative experiences around race at an early age, right? So there's data that just causes that. And so that same kind of question is also an awareness building question, right? How do you see the role of police officers in community safety? Where did you learn that police officers have this role? Might be the, I think that might be the crafting of that question, Brittany. So I think these are good starter questions for us. So we, we have three at this point. What I'd like to do is send them to all of you. And then Paulo, have we established the agenda for ATRAC for this next meeting?
We have, and I spaced out a good chunk of time to give updates on this or ask questions if you'd like.
Perfect, because I think our next job is to take it back to our respective groups. And we will get to the logistics, Neil, I promise, because I am a logistics person. So we will get there. But and to take our questions back and look at them and craft them. And so we'll each take all three questions back, look at them, craft them, and then come back together. And look at, you know, which questions are we feeling like this is a great question? And we're gonna ask people, I'm gonna say. You all, ask Chief Rochang and committee at the police force, who are, are we good if we, we have these people representing us? And we know that they're gonna come with good questions. Brittany, we're gonna ask the same generosity of our team to say, okay, we've got what you want. And now we're gonna go in and collaborate together and come up with, well, I'll figure out a dot mechanism or some kind of vote. For us to figure out which questions we think are important.
Hey, Dory, quick question for you. I'm sorry, on Zoom, I don't know whether he put the hand up feature like on Microsoft Teams is, so I just gotta blurt it out. Yeah, and as we, as we move forward on it, we could just be collaborative on the, the timeline as well, because I think maybe ATRAC can sometimes move a little faster. Than the PD is. And, and that's just logistical for us, like I'm working from home right now. Um, the chief's been out and then, you know, I only have access to, you know, me and Neil and I have limited access to chief sometimes because she's the chief of police and busy. So it, sometimes maybe a week or two weeks may seem slow, but it's actually kind of fast in our world, but we'll, we'll try to move as quick as we can collaboratively with you.
Captain, you got to my next question. So what amount of time is a reasonable amount of time for us to come back together? Because what we'll do in the meantime, I'll start working on the logistics list. And Brittany and Sabdi and I and Lisa can get together and Kathy and kind of figure out, you know, what ATRAC folks can. What's the capacity and how much time we have to do things and, and also work through those pieces, Neil, as you said. Um, around the art pieces, because the one person that came to mind, um. Razia Rocham, who does a lot of the arts work in Washington County. And I was gonna reach out to Chris, Chris Zokian and those folks at the Beaverton Arts Foundation too. Just to have a conversation and say, how involved do you wanna be in this? Because at the same time, we have to be respectful of them because they're trying to get a whole art center up and running. In the next seven months.
And I was just thinking to be fair, uh, be, that the ATRAC Commission, the Arts is a commission, uh, these are commissions uh, of the same, under the same umbrella. Uh, ju- just like we would as police department, work with like public works or something, uh, i- if there's, if there's some, um, like, I guess mutual. Whether there's a mutual interest there, then, then that, that should probably be vetted out or deconflicted, uh, that kind of stuff. So that, that's why I bring that up.
Neil, I appreciate it because that to me is the key to us working together, right? That we've got to collaborate with these other teams that also work in the city of Beaverton. So thank you for that great thinking and sharing that. Appreciate it. Paulo, your hand is up. He's got that feature.
I just wanted to show off to Captain Lendell that I could raise my hand and he can't. Um, no, I just, I know that we're doing logistics later, but just one thing, I know that you mentioned an artist here. And then I think you mentioned another space also. And so I just wanna let you know that, uh. Yes, you have full freedom to go ahead and use the ATRAC budget because I haven't been buying you any food or anything, so the money's there. The only thing is that um our deadline cutoff for purchase orders, so anything over a thousand dollars is actually technically supposed to be at the end of this month. Officers, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's where we're at. And so if you were looking at trying to hire an artist or anything along those lines. Uh, we'd have to have that conversation much sooner rather than later.
Okay.
I know, I know, uh, we're looking at, there's an outside entity wants to do like a domestic violence display, so some artwork for the PD and. Uh, Katrina Rodriguez, our domestic violence advocate is working for that, but it's kind of new for us that we're, we're having to work, like Neil said, work through the arts commission. So if we do do anything art, we just need to at least touch base with them, make sure we're not making any mistakes or.
Yeah.
And I think that's new for us. We learned that this time.
Always learning. And yes, I can, I can imagine that my friends on the art commission are really, they wanna have, and I get it. They wanna have a uniform look or idea around how art projects go up in the city. Um, so yep, definitely check in with them. And Razia is actually, I think she was formerly on the commission, so that's why I mentioned her. Because she also is one who has a strong list of artists who might be able to help us. Woo, I can't believe it. It's four twelve, we're on time, people. I'm giving you back three minutes. I appreciate y'all. Um, just as we sign off, a word that describes. How you're feeling as we move forward. Shout it out, folks, shout it out.
Well, as you know, I'm long-winded, so I was trying to pare down my long sentence to one word. So uh, I, I will just, I got it down to positive. How's that positive?
Positive. Appreciate it.
Can I use two words?
No, one. I'm giving you a construct now.
Uh, I'm just optimistic, so.
Positive.
There's a word, there's a word I've used before that, which uh, uh, diminishes a little bit, but I think you got the point.
Here you, like optimistics, go with it.
Yeah.
How about you, Brittany?
Um, I was gonna say excited.
That was the one I was gonna use too. I'm excited to do this work. Paulo, how about you?
Hmm, I have a fever, so I'm trying not to think about that. Um, I'm thinking visual, because I'm, you know, I, I wanna see what this thing actually looks like. So visualize, visual.
Have one, one minute, Paul, before it's uh, we're gonna get out of here early.
Visualize. All right. I just wanna say, appreciate you all. Captain, thank you so much for joining us, even as you're nursing a sore leg. Um, appreciate you. And Neil, thank you for all, going through all of our um phone and not phone, and I will send notes out tonight. And Britt, thanks, thank you for making it. I'm glad you're feeling better.
Thank you, me too.
All right. Take care.
All right, bye bye.